Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Culver Town Council. For all calls, please.
Oh, you're calling in here?
Present.
Go get them.
Sure.
Jane and Monroe.
Here.
Jane and near.
Here.
Senator Chardy.
Here.
Please join in the platte, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Your participation is your consent to be broadcast on the Culver YouTube channel. Also, if you have a cell phone or other electronic device, if you'd please put it on airplane or mute. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Approval of minutes, the last meeting. We have a motion to approve.
How many should approve?
Senator Neer. And. Mr. Neer makes the motion, Mr. Monroe, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Next is public concern, utility ordinance violation appeal. Anyone in the audience? Anyone online? Next is public dialogue. Have a public hearing, two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh seven. Going to open the public hearing at six thirty-two.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is an ordinance authorizing the addition of sale of bonds of the town of Culver for the purpose of certain capital improvement projects. Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh eight. Ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of general obligation bonds. Anyone here wish to speak on behalf of the public hearing? Anyone online? Motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion.
Been moved by Mr. Monroe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Getton. We close at six thirty-three. New business. Approval of town park supervisor.
Yes, sir. After the work sessions and the interview sessions, we've arrived. I would like to propose and ask the council to approve Crystal Moss as our new park supervisor. The add a rate of twenty-two dollars per hour with full-time benefits. I think you both are everybody that has attended or is familiar with her, and if there's any questions, I'll entertain them, but if not, I approve it.
But the public, what's her background?
Her background has been, she worked in recreational for quite some time. She worked over Monterey and she is from Help Me Out Northeast, Crown Point, that's what I thought. She has been with the park, Helping Amber, for three years now, off and on, so she's very familiar with it. She does not have a formal degree in it, but she is, she just got back from French Lick and is eager to learn. So she does have a lot of working knowledge, but she's also eager to kind of build that educational too, so.
I want to make the motion to approve the hiring, but then also have a suggestion afterwards.
Mr. Monroe moves. To, moves to hire, discussion?
Uh, my mistake, could have been.
Oh, that, this can be the day.
Oh, yeah, my apologies. Yeah, yes, thank Karen for the reminder, yeah, for the eighteenth to start.
Well, then my motion and approve the hiring of Crystal starting on the eighteenth.
Mr. Monroe moves to start the hiring date of Crystal to the eighteenth. As a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neer. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Phil, my suggestion was going to be that we consider hiring Amber as an independent contractor for, like, on an hourly basis. We ask her for a proposal or something. Because I think at least for a period of maybe six months where she could be on call as a consultant to Crystal. She's gonna, Crystal's gonna go through some new things that she, she wasn't responsible for even in this interim period. And being able to rely on Amber to call her, meet with her on occasion if she needs that sort of help, I think would be helpful to Crystal in this new role. I'm just suggesting that, you know, we ask Amber to give us some sort of like hourly consulting rate. And we could certainly cap it at, you know, ten hours a month or something, whatever it is.
I think that's a good idea.
More or less to.
I think it's a good idea.
Kind of train Crystal into that role because Kevin hasn't spent time in that role himself. He made the peer contract, so I know he can help with that. But there's so many other things I'm sure Amber did over the winter months and, and then leading into when the lifeguards get hired back and that sort of stuff. We're gonna want some consulting from Amber.
I think also with the contract, Amber's already been available, Crystal, some different things, learning how to get on, what companies were to go. And so it wouldn't be a bad suggestion to activate her, help me process. I would suggest getting, like you said, and then getting an hourly rate.
That doesn't affect Amber's current job?
No, I think she would just have to get permission to do it, is my guess, but she could go as independent.
Get permission to do that. I would recommend that we have that on file.
And she won't get, give us a proposal without having that in place.
Think we're good then by the next meeting?
I'm gonna ask her, you can comment if you.
Yeah, I'll, do you mind?
Not at all.
I'll follow up with Amber and then try to work something out on paper. That way we have a formal presentation in front of you, so you see the numbers and go from there.
Sounds good, okay.
Good thing.
Next. Next is the approval of Christmas, Christmas lights for the town park.
Yes, sir. We have two proposals that were put in front of us. We have them in here, is that correct? I think so, yeah. I'll pass those. We have from F and H and Sellers, the amounts are. Sellers and the proposals, the RP came out and Amber helped write for the proposal. It is apples to apples in terms of the bidding and what they provided us in terms of light service. Sellers came in with a bid of six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. And F and H came in with a bid of five thousand two hundred dollars. Like I said, they are for the same services. You can review it if you want. I'm putting those two in front of the council for recommendation and to move forward and, and to award the contract.
I'd make the motion to approve the F and H contract for the lower amount.
I'll second. Mr. Monroe moves to approve the contract for F and H. Mr. Getton seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Old business. Third reading, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh seven. Ordinance authorizing issue and sale of bonds of the town of Culver for the purpose of certain capital improvement projects. Motion to approve on third read?
Motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Monroe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Third read, ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh eight. Ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of general obligation bonds.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Monroe moves to approve.
I'll second.
Well, we'll let Mr. Chardy second then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Next thing, department reports. Emerge the services, Mike.
Thank you, counsel. Hi. I'd like to revisit the radio conversation we had back in September. Uh, Mr. Richardi wanted me to get another estimate. She also gave me the name of Rich Sitzma. Who I've reached out to. We've had multiple discussions. He's also come down to the station to kind of see, uh, the station radio. Along with Rich, I've spoken with Zach, the nine-one-one director for Marshall County. And I spoke, spoken to a couple of different EMS fire services in Marshall County, just to kind of get an idea of what they're doing. I've had great conversations with everybody. I've learned a lot about how the VHF system works in Marshall County as, as well as the eight-hundred megahertz system in Marshall County. And what really we need, what we don't need, what's a little overkill, but I could, I could talk about it for an hour. So I, I think I've, I've come to the finalization that Rich Sitzma is gonna do some minor upgrades to our VHF system in, in the station as it is now. And his estimate is well under the, what I need approval from the council for. He's going to, uh, we actually had another VHF radio that he's gonna install down in, in the garage. So he's gonna do that, install the speakers. He's also gonna put in a backup battery system, which we, we have, but it's, it's not working. So he's gonna, he's gonna fix the backup battery system, install another radio downstairs. I think the, just to let you know. Six, six hundred and thirty-five dollars is what he pulled to me. That'll, that'll take care of, of the station. Now, what I would like to have approval of the council would be two eight-hundred megahertz portable radios. Right now, we have, pretty much, we, we have three radios that we can use and are working just fine. The problem is, at the end of two thousand twenty-four, you can't have them serviced anymore. So they, they've reached their lifespan of service. If, if they would stop working, there's no way to get them repaired. You break an antenna off, tear off a knob or something, there's no parts for them anymore. So even though they're working good and, and the Motorola people and ERS tell me that, and along with Zach, the nine-one-one director. Those radios will continue to work, so that's good. We can use them, but if something happens to them, we don't have a backup. But what I would like to do, what I'd like to ask you guys is if, if I could get the approval to buy two more eight-hundred megahertz portable radio. And those will be good for seven years. If something would happen to them, those can be fixed. The other nice thing too is we're doing more and more things around town, football standbys, Lake Fest. Whatever it might be to where there's two crews going. And right now, as of right now, we don't have enough portables when we have two crews going. So going forward, if, if I can get the approval to get those portables, then everybody will have a portable. We'll have portables that are, that'll, will be good for seven years. And like I said, it's a strange system where you almost, we almost have to have VHF and eight-hundred megahertz radio. In terms of, well, like I said, I could talk about it for now. But really, after talking with everybody, this is what I think is the best for Culver EMS and financially, I think the best for the town too, so.
So, bless the cough. Let me give you the cough then.
For the two radios, I got a estimate for nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Got that in your budget?
Yeah.
Yep. Comes down to one of you about it.
I'll make a motion that he purchases the two eight-hundred, here are three of them.
And did you check with Rich on the price of something other than Motorola?
He, he can't do anything with the eight-hundred megahertz.
Okay.
He, he's only able to service the VHF size, so.
I couldn't remember whether he got.
Mr. Getton's move to approve purchase of the two radios. I'll second. Mr. Neer seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Fire, Terry?
Yeah, I got a few things to run by you guys tonight. Our ladies auxiliary is trying to put up a Santa's mailbox and they want permission to put a Santa's mailbox up next to the memorial. Down by the fire station. It's on town property, so I could not give them permission to do that. They'd like to put in, like, the Friday after Thanksgiving and take it down, like, December fifteenth, so kids could drop off letters. They'll answer them, then take them back.
Like, right at, yeah, just the sidewalk?
Right. We'll probably mount them to the sidewalk with some concrete bolts that won't do any damage, and then we'll just take them out. So someone doesn't steal on the mailbox. Is there a mailbox?
That's walk along.
That's right.
Right, yeah. Is it just for kids, Terry?
I don't have all, but I would say you could probably put a letter if you want.
Well, sorry, the town manager's asking that question. Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Monroe.
Second.
Mr. Monroe moves, Mr. Getton seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
And the next one is our tornado sirens. We did finally get the parts in that we ordered a while ago. Next week, we're taking one down at one seventeen and hopefully putting the one back up on Fifteenth Road, so those two tornado sirens will work at that point with some help from Bob and Damon and some of the people I'm not gonna mention because they might get in trouble. The next thing I want to bring up to you is a while back, we went to Minnesota to talk about the fire truck that we purchased. We went through the specs and ran the spec book and did everything, and we ended up cutting at this time. We cut the price between forty and fifty thousand dollars off of what we said we were gonna pay for that truck. So at that point right now, that's where that is. We will, we'll rebuttal one more time with them to make sure that what we wanted comes off and on because there was not one item. There was a lot of things that we changed and, and made them better for us than what we're on the original spec, so that's a good thing.
Terry, the redevelopment commission approved a spending plan for two thousand twenty-five to put two hundred thousand toward capital emergency services investments. And then a contribution to the township at fifty thousand for emergency services equipment. And that'll be for two thousand twenty-five. Just as an update.
Good deal. And that, and that brings the next thing on my list is getting informed that the county council is trying to give a fifty thousand dollar matching grant to all the fire departments in the county. Does anybody have insight on that?
I've heard about it. I have about it. I've heard about it. It just has been processed.
I do not know that. It's coming out of the county council budget. I'm, I'm just hearing some backlash and I have not been approached by this. But someone told me what's happening. I'm going like, oh, maybe we should know about it.
I just found out not too long ago myself.
So it's, it'll be, and I sound like they're trying to push this through before the end of the year, so, and it's a matching grant.
It's that, that's the problem right now. It leaks out before they really have any flesh to the skeleton, so it, that's why it's, it's one of those things, Terry.
Okay. I didn't know if there was something I missed in a meeting or something.
Nope, nope.
But hopefully that comes around. If it does, I don't know what, I know it's fifty thousand dollar matching. I don't know what they're gonna set parameters on. I know some of the other meetings that we had with other departments, we were trying to get grants and stuff, radios and, and things along those lines. But I know we just got new radios, except for in our trucks, but that's something to, I guess we'll keep our ears open and see if that's.
And if I hear anything, I'll, I'll definitely.
Yeah, figured someone would be contacting me. I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Terry. Wayne is not on tonight, so now we go to park. Crystal?
Is not here? Not, not yet, but she will. I had a good, uh, good wrap-up meeting. We are moving forward. We're getting contracts in for the pier slips. As of date, knock on wood, I have not had anybody clearly point out anything. So we're taking in the contracts. We're on schedule with that. We are getting, uh, Tim, Hugh Haas is getting the final pier stuff out. He was down there working today. He does have fabrication for the pier sockets on B. We're gonna hold back and not install those pier sockets until next fall. Logistically, it didn't make any sense to try to push forward and cost-wise, it would have been prohibitive to have him put them in this fall, take it out, put it in. It would almost two times the amount of labor cost and that just wasn't there. But I think I'll be approaching council possibly with the option of buying the, the material for the pier sockets that he's fabricated. And that might be on the agenda for next meeting. I'll try to get that in front of you prior to, so you can look at the quote. Other than that, no, it's quiet down the park and things are being maintained.
Bob, are you on?
I am on.
You have anything, sir?
Yes, he does.
Kevin, cover it, but, you have anything for me?
You have anything for us?
Yes, he does. Silence. Uh, Bob provided me the information. He has two quotes sitting in front of us. These, Bob, you can comment if you want to, because I have the quotes, but it's, it's ones for the, uh, for the wastewater pump. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes, there's one from Prado Lift Station.
Yeah.
One for our return waste activated sludge. It's in the plant.
That's at the plant, right. I knew there was two and one was Prado. These are, go ahead.
There was one more added late today. I didn't know if you got my email or not.
I did not.
Okay, we can wait on it.
Okay. So just the two quotes in front of me. The first quote is for, I assume this is going to be for the plant at ten thousand six hundred and five, quote. That includes the repair for the pump, the empower, the labor and all. And the second is for three thousand four hundred and thirteen. I believe that one's the lift station, Bob?
Nope, vice versa.
Vice versa, sorry. The more expensive is the lift station.
Correct, it's a bigger.
Okay, we're looking for approval of those two quotes if we could, please.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the quotes.
Second.
Mr. Chardy seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thanks for walking me through that. Okay. That's it, I think, for utilities.
You got a bag quote, yep.
Oh, I got a bag quote. Where's that at?
I don't know. Wherever you left it.
You wouldn't have to have the information, would you, Bob?
I don't, I don't have it. No, I'm sorry, I don't.
All right. Do you have it? I'm sorry. I printed up.
He's a sludge bag.
Sludge bag.
Yeah, there's sludge bags. I can't bear how much they're.
Right. Eight thousand, eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And ran it nine times.
Big bag, yeah. It is a big bag. The big bag. How much was that?
Eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from Blue River Technologies.
I think that's for twelve of them.
Well, and there you have it, front of the bargain. It just doesn't.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the quote for the bags.
Second.
Mr. Chardy seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
And those bags have been about that price for eighteen. Eighteen.
That's what Bob said, second. Bob, am I, am I done?
I believe so.
Okay. Obviously, not a good understudy tonight. My apologies. Okay, that's it for utilities.
All right. Town manager, let's see if I can get my part in this.
Two orders of business for the president's signature that I'm asking. One is a memorandum of understanding. The MOU is for the Maxine Kentucky Adventure Sailing. It's something that we've approved previously. Nothing has changed within the memorandum of understanding. I did a comparison to last year's. It allows them to have access down to the park and it provides the sailing program. I think it was very successful. They also included an exhibit. This is tentative. They wanted to emphasize that. But it begins on June seventh and it's sailing Saturdays. It's gonna work on Saturdays all the way up into August second. There's some possible camp scheduled for twenty-nine of July to August first. So there's some wonderful opportunities to kind of bring sailing and the skills of sailing to kids. I asked for your signature through the president, and I asked the council to approve that signature.
The move, the move by Mr. Getton's.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. All those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. I also have drafted a response letter that requires the president's signature. This response is into a recent IDEM inspection of our wastewater plant. There were several issues that were needing addressed and several issues that are brought to our attention for future improvements. We are addressing, my response indicates that we currently have Midwestern and Scott Seiple doing assessment and the study of the plant to propose those improvements and a timeline for those improvements. Within that timeline and those improvements, we're going to address everything that was included in the IDEM report. So what I did was simply outline on the item bit and let them know that we are currently in the process of addressing it. Nothing major, but I asked that the council approve for the president's signature.
Motion to approve authorizing Phil Clevenger to sign the letter for item.
Mr. Monroe moves. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Neer. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Maybe, oh, same sign.
Yeah, thank you. Last item of business overlaps a little bit with Wayne and the police. Last week, we were addressed by several concerned citizens. We've had some incidents in town. I'm sure probably people have heard about them. Without commenting on those incidents directly, Wayne and I met with the concerned citizens. There were about fifteen. Mr. Clevenger was there. Jessica Hannan was there and Stan Cross was there for the commissioners. And it was an interesting meeting. Some of the concerns that were addressed were the safety of town. Even though Wayne couldn't comment on the active cases, he was able to provide information that addressed some of the difficulties. Sometimes that the local level has with addressing these issues because there's county and state involved, without going into details. But it was a very good meeting. I think that the public realized some of those difficulties and they had some interesting suggestions. Two that I took away that there are something that we can do about as a town. Number one is bring awareness. Making sure that we're communicating. Doors need to be locked as incidents do happen, but sometimes a mole hell looks like a mountain in Culver, and that's the wonderful thing about living here. But they can escalate sometimes, so just keeping an awareness and communicating as a town, that was an excellent thing. The second thing that came through, Karen and I were looking, have been looking at a way of communicating directly with the town. On a one-way street, other than town gallon lake, because that becomes a dialogue and sometimes watered down. So we realized through Karen's work, she realized that the utility system has that capability. We've known it for a while, but we just hadn't applied that to this incident. And so we're able to talk about streets, shortage, uh, Main Street this week, burst of water pipes now. And we have a wonderful capability of sending out a text blast as well as an email. We just need the public to get us a text phone number or a cellphone number, so it works with the text as well as an email. And now we have an instantaneous, its limitations are only within our jurisdiction because it is a utility. And so we can't extend it beyond our zone.
Is this something people opted in several years ago if you were on the text?
No, no.
Or it's different?
Yeah, it's gonna be different. And so we do have a, a, a pretty good start of database with cellphone numbers and emails, but we'll have to go on an active and try to get people to sign up. And that provides instantaneous communication.
And they don't have to be part of it.
Absolutely. I would suggest though that they don't opt in, then they can't come in and blame us for not trying to communicate. That would be the one thing.
Yeah. I mean, I would say, I mean, it's not going to be the number of emails that you're getting on town on the lake. It's going to be a situation. It's an emergency, because a pipe goes on the street, water's off, you know, some sort of notification of that sort. That's probably more important. It's not gonna be my, I'm not gonna send out the agendas and that type of thing. The other thing is if we have your, your cellphone or a text number.
The other thing is if we have your your cellphone or a text number or an email, it'll automatically go out. Um so it's not an opt in, opt out. The only way you're opting in or out is providing us with their your phone number or email. So.
And and like that, there would be an occasional reminder.
Things like agendas and stuff so we get off the TGO?
You really can't. Um so when it comes to agendas, Karen and I have been posting them on the website. There's a link there. It takes you to the Dropbox. It gives you the full history. Um also with the BZA, uh all the agendas aren't there. Um plan and so just trying to encourage people to go to that website. It's still, I mean, being the guy that's working it right now and learning it at the same time, we've got the capabilities. All the meeting notices are there. I have discovered too, when you click on the meeting notice now where it's posted on the date, I can actually attach the agenda. So it's it's a quick one stop shop. So the notices are at the back of the page. You'll see tonight's town council meeting. You click that. It will load the agenda for you and you'll be able to see the agenda as of date. So I just realized that as a learning.
Heard of doing both of this because I think, as I said at the one meeting, I don't know if it was a work session or a meeting. People assume that we own Town Down and Lake or that we're the ones in charge and it's like, there's so much junk mail on there and stuff that
It has its purpose. That's right. I think it's very difficult sometimes to get a message out. And so, yeah.
Yeah. I've had it where I sent something directly to a person and needed information and they deleted it because they thought it was just, you know, junk.
Update. That's it? Thanks.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Say our attorney is, or let's go to the clerk's report. I'm sorry, Karen.
I have a couple of claims over twenty five hundred for your approval. The first one is Peerless Midwest and that is two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for water pump testing. Uh the second is American Signal Corporation, three thousand four hundred ninety two dollars and forty cents, and that's for this pieces and parts for the side of repairs. Um EJ Prescott, four thousand one hundred seventy dollars and twenty seven cents. That's actually for meters for the dunes and we are being reimbursed by CMD. We've already received that reimbursement. We're just paying uh the bill. And then the final one is Tim Yuhas, ten thousand one hundred sixty five dollars and that's for period of both.
Motion to approve claims. Mr. Neer moves. Second by Mr. Githens. All those in place. Are there any discussions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign. Anyone else, Karen?
I've got a couple more things. Um the dunes. Um so we are now uh receiving payment applications from CMD for the work that they're doing installing the water and sewer down South Main Street. So I have a payment application. Um number two from them. Um you've already, a couple of weeks ago, you were you approved payment number one. Payment number two is for one hundred ninety two dollars, one hundred thousand ninety two hundred ninety two thousand five hundred fifty six dollars and sixty two cents. I don't write checks that big first.
I was gonna say, is that reimbursed ready?
This is gonna be reimbursed through ready, yes. My my request is to make a motion to approve this pending Scott Seifel's review of it, which he's in the process of doing. I just don't want to necessarily hold up that whole process. So once Scott submits it or, you know, gives his stamp of approval, I'll get it to Shannon and we'll submit for ready reimbursement. Um but I just wanted just keep keep it moving.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to uh payment application claim to CMD pending Scott Seifel's approved review.
Mr. Monroe moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tardy. Any discussion? If not all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign. Mr. Githens is a nay.
The second thing I have is the process to receive, process to reimburse CMD. Um it's kind of a multi step process, but there's an exhibit B, uh which is a form of dispersment request from the construction account. Um cover equity set up uh to receive the ready grant funds and then they're reimbursing. Kevin's gonna have to explain that whole.
Got it. So what happened was there's a there's an account sitting that matches the ready grant of one point three million. When we get this approved, that money comes out and it goes to the bank. It draws from the bank to pay the bill. What happens when the ready money comes back is we send that back to them in a reimbursement account, not the separate ready. So they pay from the ready account. It gets approved. It goes out. We authorize the bank to put the money back in the reimbursement account as it comes in. So that reimbursement account will match what they had, the one point three in the ready. So it's it's just moving the money from one account to the other. We have a separate form, so when it comes back, we have to authorize it to go to that reimbursement account. I believe that's what Karen has in front of her tonight. To authorize that ready grant that came to us. We now have to authorize the bank to put into the reimbursement account. That be fair?
Exactly. Thank you.
I can't believe I had a moment of coherency. I'm gonna pass out.
You and me both. Um so I have two forms that um just to make sure that everything is kosher above board and you all have are approving it. Um and it's it's shown in the minutes. I have a form of distribution, just dispersment request from the construction account. And then a deposit request into the reimbursement account. And this is for sixty one thousand one hundred seventy five dollars and thirty eight cents. Which is what we we have received from ready. So it's sitting in that construction account. So if I could have a whatever. I think that's for myself. So approve, my my request is that you make a, let's all make a motion that I approve my signing exhibit B, the dispersment request and exhibit C, the deposit request for payout number one in the amount of sixty one thousand seven one seventy five thirty eight.
Was so eloquently stated.
It it's already there and that's that.
Mr. Tardy seconds. Any discussion? If not all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign. Mr. Githens is a nay.
Um then I have been working diligently all summer trying to get things reconciled. And it has been a chore. Um so but they're finally, I'm finally caught up through September. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the financial reports from July through September. You should have already received those.
I made a motion to approve the financial reports from July through September.
Mr. Monroe moves.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Neer. Any discussion? If not all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign.
And um that may be the last one for a little bit because I got my new computer system and I'm still trying to figure out. So it was three days of training last week that wasn't quite um over everything that I needed. So um we'll see how that goes. Um let's see longevity. Just wanted to let you know longevity was paid and wanted to um kind of recognize our full time employees between the thirteen full time employees that were eligible for longevity. There's a hundred fifty years combined or a hundred fifty five combined years of service. So I just wanted to point that out. Um it is the end of the year and which means there's all kinds of wrap up stuff and I say looking forward to the new year. I'm not sure. Um but one of the things that we need to pass or that we should pass by the end of the year is the salary ordinance. Um we discussed, we had a lot of discussions uh when we were in budget time and Kevin and I kind of came out like this is what we would like to do. Um my plan or what I'm hoping you'll be agreeable to is I'll provide a chart like I've done in the past, basically showing everybody's current current um pay rates. What that, how that um that formula that we've kind of come up with will will change on what their new pay rates are. Um and then based on that, have a work session, um just kind of review it if there's any questions or changes. Um once we have that work session, then I'll go ahead and have the salary ordinance. Um and we should be able to do that in two reads or one or two reads and we can take care of that in December. Um so I was wondering if you would all be amenable to having a work session November twenty sixth, which is a Tuesday because we've moved it. It's the week of Thanksgiving. Um we've already moved that meeting to Tuesday, uh but if we could have that at five thirty.
Are we allowed to have it earlier?
You can have it earlier. I would just keep with that in our No. I I just, I don't think any more than an hour, a regular meeting at three thirty. So four or four thirty two early.
Would that be, did too much time between meetings then?
So we'll have, we'll have a work session and then we have a regular meeting. Never mind, I'm sorry. I forgot. I I think we can get done. Yeah, I mean, I I don't anticipate a lot of questions. I mean, Kevin and I have done a lot of work already. I talked with the department heads and it kind of across the board. We're not gonna have these, you know, one department gets bigger raise, another apartment, you know, we're playing catch up during the year. I I really will advocate fiercely that that last year was the last year of that.
We've kind of stabilized with uh the cost of living rate across the board based upon what appeared to be the median of of wage um for the town. Um just a flat four percent on that. Um and comes out to be approximately twenty four hundred dollars um an increase per per person um on full time. And then and I think, you know, moving forward, Karen and I talked about this and this is something we can do during work session, but kind of do that model for two years. Percentage rate and then have a third year review. In which if there is exceptions or something that needs to be addressed individually, that could be brought to us by the department heads for consideration. But kind of stick you that model.
I will clarify, it's not a percentage. A percentage to a median salary and then took that amount.
That's right. Yeah.
That'd be sensible.
Yeah, so about six grand kind of in that area. So it's number we kind of.
Is there any conversation internally with department heads or you two about a holiday party for the employees?
Yes.
My favorite thing.
There's been discussions and nothing hungry.
And here's the thing, there'll be none Christmas. Okay, yes, yeah, we will. Um whether or not
Even if it's after the new year, if they prefer to do that.
There are some different suggestions.
I'll talk to you.
Away.
In your office. I wanna make a.
Okay, and then the last meeting in December is scheduled for December twenty sixth. Um which is a Thursday. Um there are number, as most of you know, there's a lot of stuff that I'm getting it together for that last meeting. If um would you be amenable to meeting on Monday the thirtieth? I'm I'm gone from like the twenty fifth through the twenty eighth.
So we wouldn't have a regular meeting on the thirtieth instead of the twenty sixth current.
Okay.
So we oh do all the.
Yeah, okay. And so um we'll move that that last meeting from the twenty Thursday, the twenty sixth to Monday, December thirtieth. There was also a request that came through. There's a uh in dot meeting regarding US thirty one on December twelfth. And is it possible for us to move our first meeting in December to, was it Tuesday?
Tuesday the tenth.
I can do that. I really think some, one or two of us should. I have, I I'm supposed to be at that meeting.
Right, yeah.
But it's the la- it's gonna be the last one for that project.
Yep.
I think for stakeholders, they may do one for the public at some point, but I don't. December the thirtieth and December tenth.
Okay, could I just have a motion from somebody just so that that it's finalized in the meeting?
Make that motion to alter the schedule for these dates discussed. But I want to clarify, November twenty sixth, five thirty work session, six thirty regular meeting.
Correct.
Mr. Neer moves. You know, a second? Second by Mr. Tardy. All those, any discussion? If not all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Since our attorney is not here, we'll move to consular issues with Mr. Neer.
Hey.
Ms. Monroe.
Um I don't have any other than the same one I brought up with the CRC. You guys voted last year to uh find funds for one MC and I believe they would like to present again um and follow up on that. And I think they were hoping to get on the agenda, so maybe the next meeting agenda.
Okay.
Um and I'll let Kevin and Marty follow up with scheduling them because they're both.
I can contact.
Yeah, I think, well, I think it was Lisa maybe was the name.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, yeah, I'll follow up.
So, yeah.
Mr. Tardy?
I don't have any.
I have nothing. Mr. Githens?
Thing is, everybody knows Nova and I are moving to uh Fort Wayne area. And I have notified our party chairman, Deb Vandermark, as well as uh our precinct chairman, Sean Cerisi. That my last day will be uh December thirty first. They will probably hold a caucus sometime uh shortly after in January to fulfill everything for years.
So we really need to have a good holiday party. It's best people we know.
Party for Bill. Bill, you'll be there.
Yeah.
Are you guys
Yeah, absolutely.
Written letter?
I feel well.
All right, next. I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No. I'll I'll move to adjourn.
Mr. Githens moves, we adjourn in a second. If I could say my mission here, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those same sign, word here.